Okay, so it is eight oh one, call the meeting to order. We good, Bill? Okay, great. All right. First up is I'm trying to take notes while we do this today. So if I'm my eyeballs are switching back and forth, that's why. Okay, public comment. Is there anybody in our lobby, Bill?
There are no members of the public attendance.
Okay. All right. Next thing up is our July minutes. I sent them out with the meeting notice. Do we have any? Okay. I get a second, Amanda? Any discussion? All in favor? Put your hand unanimous. Okay, great. I know how to spell an Anna, Amanda. Unanimous. Come on. Okay. All right. Still looking for another commissioner? Anybody have any ideas? Okay, then let's move on. We spent pretty much all our money in twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. I haven't done the complete reconciliation. I had one more invoice come in yesterday. So hopefully that'll get moved over and we're only one month in on fiscal year twenty six, so we're doing fine. We are having, we are working on our capital project expense and there's a little bit of a discrepancy between what's in the budget and what we have. So we're trying to work that out with Maria. But I don't think there's going to be an issue. So we should be able to start the server project pretty soon, I'm hoping. We may need a supplemental appropriation. Again, not quite determined, but there's a board of finance meeting in September. And then town council in October. And that's probably when we'll be able to green light this. So Laura, I'll talk to you offline after I I talked to Maria again. And just so we let DNR know what the timeline looks like. Okay. All right. So programming.
Programming. I've got a lot of notes for programming. We're actually still running a lot of original programming. August has not been as rerun heavy as it's been in the past, just because recording all those sports gave us a nice backlog of adult education. So we're still running a lot of concerts. I've updated our PSAs between the shows. We run PSAs to fill that, you know, sometimes up to ten minute downtime. I'm always looking for slightly longer interstitials. So I'm open to that. In the past, I've found stuff from the National Science Foundation, but I haven't found as many, you know, three, four minute pieces that are already prepackaged. So if anybody has suggestions for those, I'm certainly open. Morning, Jens.
Again.
Good morning.
I just sent out the fall sports spreadsheet to the videographers. So crazy that that starts, like the season starts right after Labor Day. So let's see, I'm looking at it right now. Not a whole lot of people signed up yet, but I don't know, you know, again, I don't know if people aren't and aren't mentally ready. It's fine. We'll figure it out. I mean, again, this is always stuff that's never been mandatory that we cover, but it's just nice that we cover. One of our, as far as videographers go, one of our student videographers graduated and is heading off to college. So Leah heads off this week. I did tell her, you know, please stay in touch. She's always welcome to come back and help out over breaks and over the summer.
So her last name is Cohen?
Yes, yeah. So and I reminded her to get you your her last invoice before she.
Well, she can come back at Thanksgiving.
Absolutely. Yeah. But just to make sure that she's, you know, got her invoice. Yeah. So that's not hanging out. So Fall Sports is out. I have a potential new adult videographer. I can't remember his last name. His first name is Matt. His daughter is a junior at RCA. Kate, he worked at C-SPAN. He worked on the OJ trial. He was an editor. Yeah, he was like an editor. He's he is an editor. He's a broadcast editor. He's worked on the Real Housewives franchise. But he's currently between jobs. I said, listen, it's not sexy. It's not exciting. You know, it's not, this is not Real Housewives of Trumbull. But if you're interested in freelance, because he's between jobs right now, he was helping out.
If he worked at C-SPAN, he understands that.
Yeah.
They're just.
Yeah.
So if he was there for the OJ trial, then I may know him because I left only a couple of years before then.
Because I did mention your name, but he didn't, I don't, I think he was on the West Coast, obviously, because he was doing like reporter interviews, like.
We definitely know some of the same people, so.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure you overlap a lot. So I gave him my email. Like I said, I said, it's freelance, it's not, you know, it's something better than nothing. So I will keep you posted. And then school starts on Tuesday, as Jeff is very fully aware. So once school starts, it's going to take a couple of weeks for the clubs to get back in. But I'll poke into Jeff Cochrane's office with Matt Braxick and talk to the teachers and Nick Dodana, who teach the video production and see if any of the students are interested. Lynn is still interested. She's a senior. I haven't heard from Memphis. I don't know if he's interested or not, you know, in continuing. I always keep the students on the text chains until they tell me, stop calling me, just because you never know and things change, you know. Some people may find themselves in a position where they do want to come back and, you know, make a few bucks. So that's where we're at with videographers and the general programming. We're just chugging along with summer stuff. I mean, things are about to, you know, the school year is about to get started. There's, if somebody's available, I know that Mr. Manuel is doing a, like a new parent orientation on Monday night, but it's rough timing. I don't know if any of the videographers are available. I'm not available because I'm moving my son into school the next day. So I'm going to have to be breathing down his neck to make sure he actually packs.
Yeah, we could do it in the morning, Mom.
I love him, but you know, like he finally washed a load of sweatshirts, just an aside. He was given a lovely wool sweater, which he then put through the dryer. It's too short for me. It's like the sleeves are up to here on me. I put it on to show him how much it shrank. He's like, oh, oops. But a friend did tell me you can actually soak it in milk and then gently stretch, something about the milk relaxes it. Anyway.
But then you have to wash it again because it smells like.
Yeah, get the milk out of it. Yeah.
Curdled milk.
Exactly. So, you know.
So I will be. Cover that, that.
Yeah, I'm waiting to hear back from Christine or Todd, but I don't imagine that it's going to be a problem. We are not recording convocation this year, which is fine. I don't know that.
Anybody's been watching it, yeah.
Yeah, other than faculty, I don't know that anybody watched it. So that's fine.
Jeff, you think anybody's going to be upset if we don't cover it?
I think they'll be okay. I mean, you can see the viewership, right, for the previous ones?
Yes. Yeah, it was.
I think ninety percent of staff are supposed to be there anyway. So, you know.
Yeah. I think if anybody's going to watch it, maybe it's a para, but I'm not that worried about it.
Yeah.
What about original productions? What do we got?
Programming. I, we were working on, we're going to record like little teasers for Restaurant Week. We were supposed to do it next Wednesday, but that got moved to make sure that the restaurant that Rena wants to use is prepared for us. We're going to record on the September third. And then we're going to put those together to kind of lead up to Restaurant Week is more of a teaser, like stay tuned kind of thing. I was contacted, the town now has a new coordinator for recycling and sustainability. And she reached out to see if there was a way that she could work with the station to get some, you know, increase awareness and visibility. And I said, that's great. There's two ways we could do this, you know, there's bulletin boards and then there's interstitial programming. So once school starts and everybody's kind of settled in, we're going to talk about that. I'm still waiting to hear, I know Samantha Cousins from Trumbull Health Department is work, going to work on a piece. She was working with Michelle Jacob and the Senior Center slash Social Services about immunizations. So that's still in the works. It's just, we're just waiting for that to ramp up. And then the next original programming, which is a big one, is the election night programming. So again, once the kids come back, I can touch base with Katie Bowlin. I spoke with Jeff Cochrane over the summer and I mentioned to him the election night programming. So, and I said, it would be great if we could get some of the AV club kids working that as well. You know, even if there are a couple of the TCTV videographers who have more of a bent for audio or whatever to kind of.
Production, yeah.
Yeah, just to sort of mentor them and give them some tips and tricks. I, I think it would be great. I'm more, and I said to Jeff, I said, I have no problem with, you know, just kind of standing back and he and I being the overseers for a student run production. I think.
You're the producers.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. We'll be EPing.
Executive.
Executive producers. Yeah. Yeah, we got to get that EP money. But well, yeah, so I don't have a problem with doing that and handing over, you know, the lion's share of the work to the kids. I am more than happy to let them shine on both behind and in front of the camera. So, and he's on board with that as well.
So let me ask you something else. I think one of the things that was very helpful in the last election where the Hillcrest renovation was on the ballot.
Yes.
Was our video about that, you know, the the tour of Hillcrest thing?
That was a meeting. That tour actually never aired because that never got past Dr. Semmel.
Okay. So I'm wondering, yeah, I'm wondering if we can, you know, people, I think it's hard to know, to be able to vote on that referendum if you don't know what the state of the current senior center is.
Yep.
And somehow tie that into what the plans for the new center are. So I know that's, it's a little bit of time, but I'm sort of envisioning something that's, okay, here's the current state of affairs and here's taking from whatever those committee meetings are, you know, not all of them, but just, okay.
Right, right.
Two minutes on what the new thing is supposed, you know, what we're potentially voting on, right? So.
And I'm more than happy to reach out to Michelle and do a tour of the current facility. You know, ask, maybe ask some of the current seniors, like, why?
If you haven't been up there, you really don't know.
Yeah, it's the same thing with.
I saw with Hillcrest though, because I was at Daniel, I was working the polls at Daniel's farm. A lot of the people that were voting there, obviously their kids went to Hillcrest or they had gone to Hillcrest. So they knew the state of the building.
Yes.
I think we're in, and that really drove their vote.
And I think also what helped, and I did, you know, again, full disclosure, my father's on the community facilities building committee. So he and I have discussed this offline many times, just as, you know, as Trumbull residents. And I did suggest that because Hillcrest had a meeting where there was a meeting at Hillcrest that TCTV recorded. I know Vicki was there. I don't remember who else was there, but they laid out everything as far as that tectonic, the architect, they laid out the plan, the process. Somebody from, I don't know, but Vicki had brought somebody in in finance to kind of talk about the tax impact. And then they gave physical tours of the building. They had faculty and Hillcrest students walk the attendees around the building. And that is what made a huge difference because there were people from the other side of town who had said, I had no idea. Whereas, you know, my kids went there. I was in the building all the time. I, I, you know, went to, I can't tell you how many back to school nights dripping with sweat at six o'clock at night, wondering how on earth are these teachers surviving this? But, and I did say to my father, I said, you know, you may want to consider having some sort of meeting or open house at the senior center where the public can look at the building. But I'm more than happy to talk to Michelle and to talk to Lori and get a video tour of the building, just to show some of the limitations of the current space and then talk to Lori to go through the proposed new space and why this is a benefit. Or at least not maybe why, not, not why this is a benefit.
Selling one side or the other. It's just giving people that.
It's here is what is being proposed.
And here's what exists.
What exists, you know, here's all the information you need to decide whether or not you propose, you approve this project moving forward. So I'm more than happy to do that.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great idea.
And I know that in the, during the past cycle, Katie Bowlin's kids did a little short video about the Hillcrest renovation. Because there were two ballot initiatives. So they did a short video on the ballot initiatives. So I'm hoping that they will do that again. But I can't say for sure, but I'll definitely.
Well, we got two routes to go here, so.
And I'm fine with both of them. I, you know, I think that we should, I, you know, I think.
I think this is where we add value, right? Where can we help voters understand what's on the ballot, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And if Katie and her students do that short video, then great, I'll run it. I'm happy to run it. And I'll suggest that to her, but we can't, you know, we don't have any pull over what, you know, how she teaches her class. So.
Right.
We'll do our, I will do our part to do that. And I, again, I happen to know a couple of people who are at the senior center a lot. So if I need to ask anybody, you know, any questions about like, so what do you think about the current space? What, you know, what?
And refer, referendum, so it's part of the dialogue right now. And it is something that was specifically addressed when we rewrote the charter. Was under what circumstances would you need to take something to referendum? So good time to talk about it.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on programming?
Nope, that is where we stand for programming.
Okay. Technical.
Technical. Just a quick overview for the rest of the commission. Kate and I have been in much discussion about our capital plan. And this first item is the server room upgrade because the servers are past their supportive lifecycle. And, you know, they were, we were told, you know, again, that they are, they're, they're chugging along. We're starting to see things arise that occur with older servers that are nearing the end of their lifecycle. The UPS supply died, you know, there's lots of things happening that need to be replaced. So that, the quote to replace it was initially part of a larger plan. And we asked Donnie and DNR to give us a quote of just the server room upgrades on its own. So we have that, we received a revised proposal. There were some elements that were not in the original combined proposal. So we asked them about that for clarification. A lot of them came off because that would have been an increase of about four or $5,000. Now I think it's only $500 more than what the component parts are if you pulled them out of the original quote and then put them in this new quote, if that makes sense. So we have come to an agreement with what's in the proposal. And Kate now just needs to move, needs to be in contact with Maria in finance as far as actually paying for it. And then once that's been approved, then we can contact DNR and get a timeline keeping the election in mind.
Yeah.
Because we go live from those said servers. So.
Okay.
Because, you know, it's, it's keeping my brain young.
Yep.
I'm just making notes here. And that, that's where we are on the technical, on the cable cast stuff. I, we have not used the sling studio equipment since graduation, but I not would have no reason to believe that there is a problem. That said, I want to just go back through that quote and just look at prices because, you know, things have changed. I don't know if tariffs are affecting anything we're looking at. Should we have to replace anything sooner rather than later? And I would rather have accurate numbers than say, well, these are from, you know, last February, because that's not going to be particularly valid.
Okay. Can you ask Donnie what the, the timeline would be to get equipment delivered on the server project?
Yes.
Just, just a quick question, because I know we put the temporary UPS in there. Does that include a UPS to?
Yes.
Sustain.
Yeah, so we can return the, the one you loaned us back.
You want to keep it as a, as an extra just to get more life? In other words, just put a server on that, you know? That's fine. I'm not looking to get that back. I was just wondering what kind of uptime did he go over? Like if you lose power, the UPS is all guaranteed, the equipment will stay up for an hour, two hours. I mean, you're, I believe that section is on the generator, but I just, sometimes they have issues where it's a couple of hours. I just, you know, if I know the equipment will stay up for, you know, an hour and a half, I won't panic and call you if the building loses power, if there's something going on. But if, if, you know, I have a timeframe, okay, I know.
We had been included. So, yeah, we should.
I can, I'll clarify that as well. That'll be another one of my questions. So delivery timeline and then UPS uptime. I will add that to my questions for Donnie and then I'll let you know when I hear back, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's helpful for both of us.
Yes.
Okay, um, we have, still have two items on the agenda from last meeting, the video on demand audio quality that Jens, you had noted and we're going to take a look at to see if you saw any improvement?
Yeah, I haven't had time to do anything at all with it.
Okay, so.
The same goes for the, the HDMI out. I need to follow up with DNR.
Laura, do you want to do that?
Um, I can do that, Jens. Let's connect. So just so you can give me the specifics, so I know.
Okay.
We're in conversation with them anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm always emailing the library asking if we can record stuff. So I'm more than happy to, and even if I'm there, you know, to drop off a book for myself, I'm more than happy to ask.
Yes, so you don't need to worry about that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on technical stuff? Questions, issues? Okay, marketing PR, Amanda.
Yes. The rack cards have been produced and are being printed right now. I've been in touch with the library, the historical society and the senior center. I sent them over a suggested script to be read before any events that we're recording, so that people are aware of where they can watch it later. And also that we would have these rack cards available soon. I heard back from Ronnie right away. She was very excited and said that that it would be very helpful. And what else? I wanted to go back to the coverage of the referendum, which I do think is a really good idea. I'm wondering, I think I asked, but I'm not sure who to reach out to about having our information blasted out via email through the Trumbull email system. So we get emails regularly on different things that are happening in town. So being able to say, hey, you know, this referendum is on the, is going to be happening. Here's some information about it with a link to the video would definitely get our viewership up because it would get it out to people that may not normally be turning to us. So I'm not sure who in the town I should speak to about being able to kind of leverage that system that already exists instead of us having to start building our own email list, if you will.
Um, I think we got it. For selectmen.
Okay, just check with Vicki's.
And I think we just have to look at, okay, legally, what can, what can we do?
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering too. Yeah. Or is it something where we should begin to consider creating our own list so that we can send this information out?
Bill, do you have any, any, so this is using the Trumbull emergency communication stuff, right?
Um, I mean, they also put out, it's not so much the emergency, it's, you know, they might put out information about the concerts that are happening or things like that.
So the town, the town website has a multitude of different ways to communicate. What Amanda is referencing here is the news feed area.
Yes.
So on, on the, there's, there's a couple of different news feeds that we have that residents can go and subscribe to. The, the town news feeds one, Parks and Rec has one, Senior Center has one, Counseling Center, Police Department, and Economic Development, I think was the other. So, yeah, when people sign up for a town news feed alert of any of those kinds, when something gets posted to the website in that news feed area, they'll also receive an email.
Oh, so that's how it's, okay. I wasn't sure how, how it happens.
Who manages that and who decides what content can go on it?
Department heads kind of manage their own area, but Patty's a blocky, generally sends out the majority of them. So as our webmaster.
So we would send something to her and say, could you post this on the appropriate news feeds?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, obviously we probably should run this by the first selectman's office and then see if we're able to leverage the town news feed for TCTV content.
Well, my next question is if people can sign up for those specific news feeds, Parks and Rec, could we have our own news feed?
We can.
Look into that.
Look into that. Yeah, there's a way to do newsletters and things like that also. So you know, the news feed would publish to.
The website.
So there's no dedicated spot for TCTV to have that news feed. That's an extra, extra module that we'd have to purchase that happen. But you can sign up for a newsletter through the notify me process and it essentially acts the same way. So when you send a newsletter, it'll send to your email, but it actually won't post anything to the website. This is no target location for that.
Okay. All right. I'll start, I'll start with Vicki's office just to reach out and make the suggestion as a way for us to be able to kind of up our viewership and get information.
Just so.
Absolutely.
That would be, that would be good. Just sometimes she needs a little bit of clarification on what we're.
Yeah.
Okay. And then Patty's really great about putting stuff up.
So that was just my thought in terms of like beginning to expand the marketing. So, you know, if we have the rack cards and we have the information at the actual events, if we, social media is the next thing that I'm going to be tackling and now that I know what's coming up for September for originals and also just any of the general school coverage that we're going to be doing and sports. We'll have enough to begin filling those pages. And then, you know, another area is, is kind of this email and going directly to people to get them the information. I think because we're on so many different channels because of how we're pushed out, you know, if we're not constantly, but if we're consistently getting that information out to them with a quick click or the number, you know, then, then we can, again, up our viewership.
So it's not just the referendum. It's, it's, okay, can we use this mechanism that the town already has to get word out in general on our, to promote?
Exactly. And the referendum was just a
Example.
An example, and it could be a great piece that would really, you know, get information out to the town that people need to see, so.
Agreed. Amanda, I had a thought. I know that, excuse me, in the minutes from last month, there was mention of getting the slide, like the library presenter's slide presentations in advance. Would it be easier if we just created a, like a PowerPoint and a Google slide version of that rack card just to give to the librarians and just say, you know, and maybe even before the presentation, put that, like, is that an easier way to do it?
Absolutely. Yeah, I, what I said, when I sent it out to them, I, I gave a, what I called a suggested script. You know, this, this is the basic information. Feel free to, to use it any way you want. But this would be another way. If someone doesn't want to be, you know, our, our, our marketing person, if it's up there, you know, the information is there. So.
And to be fair, they, all of the library staff have been really great about pointing out, oh, this is being recorded for use on Trumbull Community Television. So almost every video that I get back that was recorded by Barry has that somewhere, like, you know, either in the very beginning or
At the end.
Doing people, but definitely before the speaker comes on. But even if that, say, in the community room can just be on the screen, you know, just so people while they're sitting there can grab, you know, take out their phone, grab the QR codes and get that information. you know, just so people while they're sitting there can grab, you know, take out their phone, grab the QR codes and get that information.
Yeah.
That could be some, you know, another just another helpful way or in lieu of a poster.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And I I think that's a great, then we don't have to print something and it's, you know.
Yeah, and and if you let me know if you want to re, you know, if you want to reformat the card.
Yeah, I can. That's fine.
Need to do it. That's fine too, because I'm still at kind of a why we haven't gotten completely crazy yet. Um, but yeah, I'm still in like the the summer lull.
Okay, I'll put something together and send it over to you and and we can kind of clean it up together.
Great, thank you.
Um.
Awesome.
I think that's it.
God, Amanda, I'm so glad.
I know, yeah.
And everything you're saying, I'm like, oh, wow, that's a, that's a really good idea. Why didn't we do that before? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, any other marketing PR stuff ideas? I feel like we're taking a giant step forward here. Really, really great. Okay, um, Trumbull High Connection, I think um, Laura, you already said school starts next week and you're going to work with the teachers.
Oh, I'll also Jeff showed me his curriculum for digital media too, which is spot on, excellent. Um, it's.
They have someone in that class.
Awesome. So I know who uh, we're going to tap for some maybe possibly another student videographer that works with her schedule if she's interested. Uh, so you know, and again, and like we had a great conversation. He's all excited. He like rearranged the desks. He was asking me, you know, like just about use of the space because he's going to be in there with the students. So I I showed him, you know, the control room like, oh, this is where Sean used to sit, but you know, because stuff got moved around. So he rearranged some, you know, the desk and stuff. So he had a space where he can kind of sit and do his things while the students are doing their thing, which is, I'm like, go for it. You know, that's, so it's great. He's rearranged. He's all excited. Um, I'm all excited because there's going to be the opportunity for the kids to do daily announcements at Trumbull High, which I know is something Kate that you and I have been talking about for. I think I've been at the station now close to 10 years, so I think that's been the complete duration that I've been here. That's been our conversation. So yay. Um, and also there's the opportunity for some slightly longer content. And you know, I did mention to him that I am um, you know, especially, and again, I just want to put this past the station, like, I'm more than happy to for TCTV to be a vehicle to spotlight these kids and what they're doing in school and to air their finished pieces. As long as they're, you know, it's like appropriate stuff, you know, there's, we don't want to put anything inflammatory. I'm more than happy to put up that, you know, the um, the legal, remember how we used to do the legal caveat, like, you know, the this pro- the content of this program belongs to the owners. We are not you know, espousing any views. They belong to the creators themselves. Like, I'm more than happy to do that. I think it would be really nice, as I said, I mean, to use TCTV to show off these kids and what they can do. Um, so.
That's what educational access is supposed to be doing.
Absolutely. I'm all for letting these kids shine. Um, and then there's the one last thing I wanted to bring up, Kate, I think I mentioned this to you. Jeff Alterman um, runs Trumbull Eagles Network. And what that is, is the audio streaming for home, for football and for a lot of home sports. And he had somebody reach out to him and ask if they can stream the home football games. And I asked for two in particular, and I kind of talked it out with Jeff and I'm like, well, what's he getting? Like, what's in it for him? Is he just looking for content? And is this so he can like fill out his offerings and, you know, and because and my, my response to him was I'm leaning towards no, because if we do it for them, then we're opening the door to any streamer on the planet to say, hey, we we need some content and they're going to, you know, and use our stuff. You already said yes to these guys. And I don't know, Kate, I don't know the ins and outs of the FCC licensure. I don't know if we're allowed to do that or not, but I just think the rule, I don't want to open that Pandora's box of letting anybody who streams, and the streamers in Brooklyn, New York, like, why do you want to stream a Trumbull football game in Brooklyn? It does, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me. I'm sure he's a lovely guy, but I don't under, like, I can see if we're playing Manchester, the first home game, and maybe Manchester wants to, like, it's not, I don't know why. I can't understand, like, does he get, you know, like, is is there, does he have an ad, like, certain number of streams and he gets, you know, is it monetized? Is it? I don't know. So I just said to Jeff, like, I think I, um, you know, I I I just, I want to reply to this guy and just say, you know, pop, that's against our policy.
Yeah, I think we need, I think we need to talk this through a little bit. Um, basically, he's getting content for free, right? He doesn't have to send anybody out to cover the game. Uh.
But again, I don't know if he's monetizing that, like, if he's got a stream, hold on, I'm going to pull up the email.
And have we talked to um, Mike King or anybody in the athletic department about this?
I haven't talked to Mike King about it. This was mostly between, like, the conversation so far was, now, why can't I find it, was myself and Jeff Alterman.
Jens, you look like you have something.
Hmm, no, I was just thinking that it's all about content and it's all about quantity. So there could be a million reasons. Maybe he's setting himself up to be sold. I I have no idea.
I mean, it's just. He said he's an owner of an internet TV station slash Roku station called New York forty-eight WWON TV located in Brooklyn. I'll forward you the email because it has all of his.
So why do you want Connecticut content?
That's what I don't understand. He said, I'm very interested in carrying the final two Trumbull Eagles football home games. Um, he's looking to add some more live sports to his station for the twenty twenty-five season and beyond. Most importantly, New York Northeast Region Sports Broadcast as New York forty-eight currently broadcasts live sports broadcasts from Long Island, Danbury, Philadelphia, Southern Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and we're looking to add more live sports. I don't know if.
So what is, what is, what are the last two games? The St. Joe's game on Thanksgiving or are we talking about?
He's talking about, it's got to be St. Joe's. That's one of the last, that's the last game. And then the game before that is twenty-first? No. Um, New Canaan. Presumably because New Canaan is down county and it's closer to a New York, but I I don't.
We know, I mean, like, his name doesn't, isn't uh, like, I've heard his name before.
Oh, interesting. Okay. I don't know. I have, like I said, I haven't looked into, I really didn't look too deep only because just my gut was like, I don't know, like, it's, I feel, I don't want this guy making money off of our content.
Are we allowed, are we allowed to sell it?
And that's my, you know, I I don't know.
We've got to look at the policy. I think we got to ask Mike King. Um, so let's.
I mean, the fact that he, the fact that he's in Brooklyn doesn't make any difference whatsoever. I mean, you you could have a a Trumbull High School alumni living in Australia who wants to watch the games and.
They already can.
They already can.
Yeah, we're already streaming it on YouTube, so it's not like he, we're.
All right, so let's uh, let me look at our policy. Um, I think we need to talk to Mike King. I know Alterman's name, there's some other context.
It's not Jeff Alter, he's the one who forwarded this to me. The guy's name is Jonathan Rios. Jeff Alterman is a teacher at Hillcrest. He owns Trumbull Eagles Network. He was approached.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah. And then so the guy who wants to stream is from Brooklyn. Jeff Alterman, he he sent it to me and said, I support whatever you decide.
Well, he, I, just a quick dive on the website and he definitely sells ad space, so.
That's what I figure. Yeah, that that's it, Bill. That's exactly what my, my hunch was to Jeff was, you know, what, he gets more mon- the more viewers he gets, the more money he makes. I said, you know, again, like I said, I don't want them, I don't want somebody else monetizing our content.
Yeah, that's definitely what would be happening and and looking to fill their streaming schedule.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm thinking this is a no.
That's, yeah, that was my initial, like I said to Jeff, I'm like, Jeff, no, I feel like this is going to open a Pandora's box of us. First of all, if we say yes to him, then there, we can't say no to anybody else who comes with a similar proposal because we already said yes. And that's just not.
We lose control of the content.
Exactly. And again, like I said, I don't know how you know, I I don't, now that everything is streaming, I don't know how like FCC regulations, you know, kind of get squishy at that point. And I just, like I said, my, my immediate gut response was, this doesn't pass the smell test to me. So.
Oh, I thi- I think for us, it's, we're, we're go, our goal is to try to make sure that people that want to see our programming can see it. And if you want to see a Trumbull High football game, I think it's not hard.
No.
To find out how to do that. I don't see how another entity is going to expand that accessibility.
I I think, I mean, if I were him, I would just embed the link to our YouTube video in his own webpage that that, I mean, everybody does that. So he could, he could be broadcasting under his platform. He could be broadcasting the the games.
Well, that was another thing that I had said to Jeff too, like, what's, what's stopping him from, I mean, I'm not telling him this, but what's stopping him from embedding our link? You know, to redirect uh, people.
So how far, do we want to dig into this more or before we decide? Or do we want to, do we have enough information to make a decision now?
No, I I mean, I think it's best to drive traffic to our page and our accounts.
Yep.
Um, because when people subscribe to our accounts, then they'll receive feature notifications for future programming. If they end up going to this guy and subscribing to his page, then they'll be notified when he posts something new, but you know, that's not necessarily what they're looking for. They're looking for Trumbull content.
We we are getting the the numbers though. If he, if he has a link, if he's got an embedded link on his page, we do get the YouTube numbers.
I don't think that's what he's looking to do. I think.
No, no, I'm just saying it, it, that's what I would do if I were him and.
I mean, we can't, if he chooses to do that, we can't stop him because that link is out there. It's a public link. So if he chooses to grab the content that way, that's on him. But I don't want, I I just don't feel like as a station, we should be making it easy for him, like, not to sound, you know, I I just think, I I don't think we should be providing this. Like Kate said, I don't think we should be providing our content to other content providers. Especially if they're, you know, not in the area and they're monetizing it.
All right, so we need to decide if we're going to make a motion to one way or the other on this, or if we're going to table it and look for to gather some more information before we decide.
I think un- until our door is being knocked down by people wanting to do this, I I would just ignore it for now. I mean, just tell them, you know, that's not our policy.
Can you want to make that a motion?
If uh, if appropriate, yes. So I'll make a motion to vote on whether we uh, get back. Help me here, Kate. Um.
Well, are, is everybody okay with voting on this right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the motion would be that we and I'll, I'll make it Jens.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That we tell, uh, what's his name? Laura.
Then Jonathan.
John- Jonathan or Jeff to tell.
Jonathan Rios, yeah, he.
Rios, um, that at this time our policy doesn't allow us to. Um.
Share our stream.
Yeah, share our stream.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.
Anybody opposed? Okay, wait, I just, I need to um, to capture my whole motion. We know. Rios. Not agree to. Okay. Um, yes. Not to get off topic, but I'm just trying to quickly scan the um, policies. And there's nothing speci- I didn't see anything specific to streaming. It looks like the last change was twenty sixteen, so I don't know if that's something that we want to.
So actually, let me, let me change the motion then to that, I move that we tell Jonathan Rios that we do not agree to allow him to stream our football content. It's efficient?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Jens, will you resecond?
I will second that.
All right, now let's vote. Yes, okay, great. All right, thank you. All right, what else you got, Laura?
I'm just full it up today. Um, that's all I got for now. I mean, I made myself a nice big page full of notes. So we're pretty much covered.
Well, I will send you a draft of the minutes, uh, because we covered a lot. If you can, I may not have gotten everything, so please feel free to uh, edit and before I send it out to the the whole committee, commission, whatever we are. All right, anything else? Uh, any miscellaneous or new business topics? All right. Our next meeting is October second. Remember, we agreed to have two meetings in October uh, for election prep purposes, so we do not have one in September. Um.
That was it. The next one is an issue for me. I won't be able to attend.
Yeah, it's an issue for me also.
October second?
Yeah, I'll be flying back from Europe on that day.
Okay, so.
And it's Yom Kippur.
That's right. All right, so why not, can we look at changing that? Because I do think we should be um, do we want to go earlier or?
I'll be out of the country from the middle of September on, October second.
Uh, all right, how about early the following week?
That works.
The seventh, maybe a Tuesday? I know that's kind of off.
Yeah, I can do that.
I can do that.
Okay, so we're going to go to October seventh, so I got to send something to Patty. I think we probably need a vote on that. Uh, let's get my, so can somebody make a motion?
Make a motion to move our meeting to October seventh?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks you guys. I know this one went a little long. Appreciate your time and uh, we'll talk.
This meeting is long now. I love it.
All right, so we're going to call, we're going to adjourn at eight forty-nine.
Okay.
All right, have a great week.
Have a great day.
Bye, everybody.
Yeah.